Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson? Need a motion to approve a mayor pro temp for tonight's meeting?
I make a motion to appoint ten of Brown as a mayor pro temp?
Second?
Second.
Approach for that. Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, we'll go through the public forums if anyone has signed up this evening. Uh, moving on to community affairs. It's the approval to set the trick or treat night.
No, there's no paper for that. Um, just a little history, usually it's the thirty first, thirty first is a Friday last year, so it works well, I feel like. So, five thirty to seven thirty, five to seven. David, do you remember? Is it five to seven? Okay. Five, okay, so. What was that?
Okay, Steve, make a motion?
For October thirty first, five to seven P M.
I'll second.
Carly, the second. Roll your votes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right. Uh, moving on, so looking for council action for approval of street closure for Lincoln Trail stunt show.
Yeah, so you should have each received a handout of the flyer that they prepared as well as a map showing the proposed street closure. Um, we did consult with David and his crew. Um, we're seeking to close off Main Street from North Central Avenue to Northwest First Street. The eastern side along Central will have EMA stationed there, and then on the western side blocking that off would be food trucks. We currently have one, hoping to have two. Um, in the center of Main Street, a section that's sixty feet, um, wide, or I'm sorry, sixty feet tall by a hundred and fifty feet wide will be blocked off, uh, with barricades, and it's within that contained stock where the stunt writing will occur. This is not as dramatic as jumping off of the World's Greatest Rocking Chair. Obviously, in that small of a space, it's going to be more slower than, uh, motorcycle stunts, like wheelies and things like that. We're requesting to close down the road at five P M. The event itself begins at six, the stunt show at seven, and then it will end at nine P M. This is, um, a kickoff party for Lincoln Trail. Um, they've obtained a new, uh, event this year, it's called the Five Hundred East. There is currently a Five Hundred West, which is, they call it a thunderance. It's a five hundred minute, eight hour long relay race at the, uh, at Lincoln Trail. So they're hoping this will become a yearly event and continue to bring in, you know, thousands of people. They're expecting four to five thousand people this weekend, so. Love to get approval to close the street.
We do have insurance.
Yes, we have, we have full harmless agreement as well as certificate of insurance all of these sides.
Okay. Well, if I don't have any, uh, questions or concerns, I will take a motion for the approval of the street closure for the Lincoln Trail stunt show on October tenth, at seven P M.
Summer.
Uh, Miss Wilson, you need a motion.
I'll say it.
And Steve the second.
You sure you reach over there and hit me?
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes. I'm correct.
Uh, moving on to the meeting minutes, uh, I'll take approval, I'm looking for approval for the minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, council meeting. Give you guys a moment to look over those, if there's no questions or concern, I will take a motion of approval.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Marcy, motion?
I'll second.
And Steve the second. Roll your votes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Moving on to officers report, uh, Clark Bumper?
Thank you, um, first of all, don't forget later, um, Jeremiah, I wanted to call a city hall committee meeting, um, to discuss their model of clerk's office, to get that product going again. Um, city hall is Hamley, Bumper, and Wilson. So, do you guys have any specific dates? You want to look, you can come back with me, I got a pick of him, just reach out to you guys to plan that, but just keep that in mind, I want to get that, unless they do that pretty soon, to talk about that.
What?
Part of the day.
He didn't say. Yeah, so. Yeah. So, I'll touch base with him again on tomorrow and then text you guys, see what dates can be scheduled then.
Okay, that was, thank you.
Thank you. Um, also, I'm looking for approval of September twenty twenty-five bill's pay to an amount of eight hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-one cents.
All right, so we're looking for approval of the twenty twenty-five bill pays in the amount of eight hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, fifty-one cents. Uh, if there's no comments or concerns, I will take a motion.
Make a motion.
Steve first.
I'll second.
And Carly the second. Okay, roll your votes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you. So ahead.
All right. Moving on to Gail, you have the floor?
I need approval of the September Treasurers Collection Deposit Report, totally five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
Anything different? Just a moment. All right, uh, if there is no comments, take approval of September twenty twenty-five Treasurers Collection Deposit Report for five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
Summer.
Lori first.
Second.
And Steve second. Roll your votes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Moving on, Attorney Will, you have the floor.
Um, a couple months back, we amended the nuisance, uh, regulations for updating the penalty provisions, and we noticed when we were doing some enforcement that we missed one section. So what this does is just ensures that the various sections relevant to nuisance vehicles match, that matches the same, um, that we have in the other nuisance provisions. So it's just a cleanup.
Okay.
So recommending approval of ordinance number five ninety.
Okay, I'll take a motion for no comments or concerns.
We got a comment. If they have a fence around their yard, that doesn't mean they can put junk cars in there, does it?
No, it doesn't, um, but there's some additional cleanup that I'd like to add to some of your nuisance regulations, um, relative to the fence issue and fencing in things. One of the provisions is having like a junkyard. Uh, you don't have zoning. And just for clarity purposes, prohibiting types of junkyards or junking next to residential, um, I'd like to add another, I'd like to recommend that you guys add a provision relative to junkyards, salvage yards, junking, um, especially next to residential properties.
When I was a young kid, if you had a vehicle without a license plate, you had to get rid of it. Now I got a guy down on our own, just got a fence up, and, and the boys, they do, uh, what do you call it? Demolition derby? I understand that, that's probably the better thing, something that we can get into. But, uh, I think it's going to turn into a junkyard.
Right, that's why I'd like to clean up some of the, now that I've been doing your nuisance enforcement for a little bit, the, the arguments that have been presented on defenses, I'd like to do some cleanup for clarity purposes in your regulations. And I think maybe we should establish like a ordinance meeting just to discuss that. All right, you guys have an ordinance committee, right?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe to discuss some possible revisions to nuisance.
Okay.
Because one of the things that we're seeing for a lot of communities is, it's not necessarily junk, it's like five thousand pieces of toys, right? And it's just everywhere, and it's unsightly, so the topic of unsightly.
When I moved into neighborhood I bought my house at, I was pretty young, and it's like immobilizers could read my mind. Don't even think about it, what they tell you.
You know, it's, it's kind of shocking, like, being a good neighbor, people are losing that in my life. Like, you know, have a nice yard, clean up, put stuff away, but. Anyway, we can proceed with some cleanup for today's purposes is the fine penalty section.
All right, if there is no more comments or concerns, I will take a motion for approval of ordinance, of the amendments of ordinance number five ninety, fine penalty section.
I'll make a motion.
Carly the first.
Second.
Lori the second. And you may roll your votes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Superintendent Biggs, you have the floor.
Okay, any approval for sidewalk bids on September twenty-fifth, at two o'clock, we opened bids for sidewalks? And the sidewalk's four feet wide and start at, on the north side of Main Street from eight, southeast Eighth Street, all the way to northeast Ninth Street. Or in front of Jim Sullivan's house, to Ninth Street. And we received four bids. High bid being forty thousand dollars and a little bid being twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars from Bartel's Construction out of Matt. So I would recommend accept their bid for twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Make my motion.
All right, let's see, you can make a motion to accept the bid, uh, for the sidewalk bid of Bartel Construction for the amount of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Second please. And Lori the second. May roll your votes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, also, on September twenty-fourth, we did a, uh, open bids for tree removal. We received four bids. High bid being ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and a little bid being from Arborist Tree Service out of Marshall for forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. So I'd recommend the council, we accept the bid from Arborist Tree Service for forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, looking for approval, the tree removal bid of Arborist Tree Service for forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Carly the first.
I'll second.
And Marcy the second. Roll your votes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Okay, also, on September twenty-fourth, at two o'clock, we did, we opened bids for stunt driving. And there's forty-eight stunt people in the case. And we received six bids. High bid was twenty-five thousand dollars and a little bid was from Nessmire Trees, landscaping for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. There are close here. And I recommend that we accept the bid.
All right, I will take a motion for the approval of the stunt removal bid of Nessmire Tree Link for thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Marcy the first.
Second.
And Steve the second. May roll your votes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
All right.
So, last Wednesday was interesting, did anybody remember what happened last night? The day the last thirty months? So we had an eight-inch water main bust on about forty-nine, about twelve-thirty, and Billy Hamilton, our water foreman, called me in. So, uh, the strange part about it is, we'd scheduled to have the half water main taken out today. But the water main leaked all the way, so it broke. So I called B and T Drain John Marshall, because I knew we didn't have the required equipment to handle that, that leak. So while we're in the process of making arrangements, I get the leak fixed, and wait on B and T Drains to come down here. Uh, John Boyer was great enough to send a crew right in the middle of the day down here to fix that leak. That was, which was a big deal. So, we were down there trying to shutting valves, I'll Billy Hamilton, Matt Wade, Chad, and some others. This was an all-in-one, some on deck, water leak. A gentleman drove by and said, hey, by the way, you had another leak on southeast First Street. So we had another leak on the six-inch water main at the same time. How that happens, the only I can assume is like a pressure spike, because they both happened at the same time, so I don't know how it all could have happened. Anyway, city guys fixed the six-inch main, and we had it fixed in a couple hours. And then B and T Drains finally showed up and removed two manholes. The water main ran through two manholes, and then it connected to, uh, service lines going down the alley behind, uh, Main Street. So they replaced the main, got it done about ten-thirty that night, and we got water turned back on about twelve-thirty. And then B and T Drains came back the next day and hooked the service lines up so that people at storefronts off the alley could have water again also. And then you all, at the same time, you have to take five samples around Casey and make sure they're bacteria-free. So that was our day the last evening. Anyway, I can't express your, thanks to, uh, Boyers for coming here and fixing that leak, and also to our entire utility department, Billy Hamilton and Matt Wade, Water Department, for, uh, the great work they do. So, that's all I have to say about that. And that's all I have to say.
All right, well, thank you so much, and thank you to those guys for getting everything taken care of.
Also, um, pizza did, but did provide pizza for all the guys, they brought a bunch of pizzas down that afternoon, so.
Reflections offered too, but there's also full pizza week. They turned them down. Uh, Crazy Yates had the utility guys the next day.
I think Coffee Co. did drinks for the guys on Friday, I think too, so, thanks to everybody.
I want to see how your sweet, I'll put out sweet in there.
Lot of, lot of help from the community for different things, so.
Great. All righty, thank you, Shelby. All right, uh, moving on to Chief Henderson. All right, uh, moving on to Tom.
Okay, I'm just gonna have a little bit to say right now, and then we get to get an economic development committee meeting on, on the floor. Really the only thing I have tonight to share with you is that I was contacted last, end of last week by Jessica Younger from Core Distinction Group, and we are going to go ahead with the full feasibility study, um, that was begun earlier. They are recommending that we aim for a hotel of about fifty to sixty rooms. And this is what's called a mid-upper scale type hotel, is what would be appropriate for the located Casey. And we're talking there about like Hampton Inn, Holiday Inn, or Holiday Inn Express, Cobblestone, Fairfield, those types. So in a couple of weeks, we'll receive from them two separate pro formas, one more targeted, one more general. Um, and then we'll go out and start marketing ourselves for, for our hotel.
Awesome. All right, is that all?
That's everything right now.
All righty, thank you, Tom. EMA Director Craig, you have the floor.
All I have is, I want to thank utilities, uh, during the parade Friday, I found a hole in the road. And, uh, they immediately came and capped it off.
It was a valve.
Valves is what it was with the cabinets.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to new business, uh, report from the public hearing on ten six. See, we're looking for council action, the approval of resolution number one zero zero six two five A. The financial commitment for the Illinois Safe Route School Grant Program in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, would be the city share.
That's the grant amount.
The grant amount?
Yes.
So is this just for the grant?
This is just for the grant amount, yep, the.
The share is what?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-eight.
Okay, so this will be just for the approval to proceed with the, the grant?
Okay.
Uh, if there are any questions, I will take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Carly the first.
I'll second.
And Marcy the second, you may roll your votes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Uh, moving on to the next, uh, we're looking for council action, the approval to accept bid for demolition of two oh four South Central.
Anything about that? Anything about that? Who do you recommend?
Oh, I don't really know who it was, uh, two years ago.
Coon Dirt Works Incorporated, Adam Marshall.
So Tracy, you said you had to, what was the correct word to jump this?
Um, to accept the bid, award the contract, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between owner and contractor to Coon Dirt Works Incorporated, their, their bid was forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
So accept two, this is an approval to accept the bid amount to award the contract and authorize the mayor to sign the said contract.
Mm-hmm.
Coon Dirt Works Incorporated.
So we're going to pay, tear that building, yeah?
Correct. And then we'll place a lien on the property.
I talked to Coons, their work, and they had done hundreds of buildings in downtown demos.
Still losing proposition.
I, I understand it's a losing proposition, but the property owner is not taking responsibility, it's a dangerous and unsafe building. This is one of those circumstances that unfortunately, the city's going to have to act in, in the interest of the public to protect the health and safety of the public. Um, this is in accordance with the statute, a lien will be placed on, uh, property, will foreclose on that lien. Um, this property owner has other properties that, you know, any deficiency could be a judgment, or excuse me, a lien against if there's a judgment. Uh, notwithstanding, having said that, or, having said that, this property owner is also the subject of, of pending foreclosure action on other properties. So there may not be assets to pay it, but the, the competing interest is that this is a dangerous, unsafe building, unfortunately, this.
Yeah, I've been watching that crap.
This is one that the city has to act.
Yes, I agree.
But, I'm sure it doesn't make anybody happy that the city has to, uh, protect the public as a result of the property owner's failure to, uh, take care of their own property. But the city's not the one responsible for damage to the other building, correct? If there was damage to that, that, that is, there is, this contractor has to, that's why we did the architectural, it's, um, this contractor, the city could be responsible through its contractor, but the contractor is responsible for it through the contract. So that's why we wanted to make sure everything was on the upper, on the architectural design of the demo, um, and as well as making sure that we have contracts. But, uh, Shelby just said he's spoken to, um,
Kevin Coons.
Contractor, they have experience, there's going to have to be some shoring, and that adjacent building is also the subject of a dangerous, unsafe action, and that property owner has an order to remediate their property. They're aware that the two have to work hand in hand. I'm just trying to dominate over that.
So upon the signature, it would start fifteen days after?
I think so, yes.
Sure, that's on the southeast.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so.
So we started within fifteen days, complete within seven after the start.
So roughly three weeks for the, the total project, okay. All right, uh, there's no, uh, comments or concerns, I will look for a motion to accept the bid for demolition of two oh four South Central, so Coon Dirt Works for forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
As well as authorize the contract and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll take a motion.
Who's on that corner?
I'll make a motion.
Marcy the first.
Wait a second, when's the mayor getting back?
Uh, twentieth?
Authorize the mayor pro temp to sign, take that back, authorize the mayor pro temp to sign. Marcy, do you, who made the motion?
I did, but I'll do it again.
Marcy, is that most, motion, continue motion?
Second.
Steve? Steve the second. You may roll your votes.
Thank you.
Uh, Brown?
Uh, yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, uh, moving on, so we're looking at the report from the economic development meeting held on at nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Marcy, do you guys have a copy of this?
It's on back.
It's on back.
Or at least part of it, let's, that looks like it's a lot more than what we have.
That's a different one, this is updated.
Oh, this is what I have.
Okay. Well, anyway, we went to, uh, the Illinois Municipal League Conference, it's held annually, it was September eighteenth to twenty-first in Chicago. And, um, the attendees, there were two thousand attendees, roughly two thousand, who are all municipal officers within their hometowns, like mayors and council members and attorneys. Our attorneys were there. Um, I'm married of, the, I have a list of a lot of sessions, but this is just a small part of it. Um, most of you will be interested in it, Mike Singletary was the opening speaker. It was amazing, really, really amazing. Um, so Tom and I didn't, although, we didn't always go to the same sessions, but he had a lot of the TIF related, and redevelopment and economic development tools, stimulating residential development, park and recreational opportunities, tourism, all those kinds of things that we're working on, and the, the information there is very helpful. Then to go on, enterprise zone expansion, add residential, Tom reported to us that the Zone Board has voted to expand the zone to residential areas. A map was presented, it shows areas that need to be added and other areas that need to be annexed into the city. This will allow residential development to take advantage of the easy enterprise zone benefits, including no sales tax on construction materials purchased in Illinois. They need to approve the threshold for rehabilitation projects in the zone expansions, which will include annexation of certain properties.
And Marcy, if I could just add a couple of things there. Um, the way this works is all of the taxing bodies will have to approve the addition of, of residential projects. Each, what we came up with is that we would provide a, uh, for residential projects, for new construction, um, everyone's agreed to do a one hundred percent, uh, amendment of property taxes, um, on new construction for five years.
Um, just for clarification, they're not required to in order for it to be approved, but it's best if they do. But if one doesn't, then you would still pay their portion.
Sure.
Okay, sorry.
But the goal is.
The goal, definitely.
Everyone participates.
Yes, because that's what the benefit is, yeah.
Thank you, Tracy. Um, on rehabilitations, we can each as a, as a municipality come up with our own threshold. In some of our surrounding counties, some of them have a lower threshold, as, as little as fifteen hundred dollars, which ends up, you know, you have, end up processing a lot of applications for that. Um, it seems something, you know, might be more reasonable to do around ten thousand. Um, so what's happening right now. Um, so what's happening right now is, as, as Marcia mentioned, we need to, to do this all at once. So luckily, a lot of our residential areas are already in the enterprise zone, but we need to add the rest of our residential areas. And we also need to anticipate where development might happen in the future, so we can go ahead and add this in now, so it's all done at once. And so that will require, um, some annexation. Once I have Moran Economic Development is handling, going to handle this process for everyone in the county. And so it'll all just be one big application process. They're gonna be working on those updated maps, which then the economic development committee will then, you know, recommend that the council approves all of those, um, changes at once, annexation, we'd have to work through that. We've got to do the amended intergovernmental agreement to add residential and, and also the benefits, so that will all be coming along soon. So you're talking about putting the whole town into your process? Uh, I mean, there will be areas that we leave out still, just because there's not going to be any commercial develop, like, we're not gonna put schools in there because there's no, no commercial or residential development there. But we'll put as much of the town in as possible, and then future parts of the town as well.
That's for building homes, whatever.
Mm-hmm, yeah, exa- exactly. So, yeah, we only, that, we, this would be, don't have to, it's, it's kind of expensive to, to go through this process. Um, so we can just do it all now, so we don't have to go back and do it piecemeal, say, hey, let's think about developing there, we'll just add this now.
Downside?
I don't know what that's like.
Is there plenty, plenty of mileage left to add?
Well, good point, there is not, um, that's why it's also to our advantage to get as much in now as possible. There, the existing zone area that's being used is fourteen point one eight square miles, the zone limit is twenty. Um, so there's currently five point eight three throughout the capital to be used, you know, a lot of, sadly, a lot of our, our zone has been eaten up by solar farms for ten years. So, yeah, we need to get this, there, depending on what everybody else comes back with, there may, we may have to tighten that a little bit. Uh, Westfield is completely covered already, their entire, you know, municipal lands are, are in their zone.
We kind of screwed up on that enterprise zone, on that stuff.
On the solar farms? Sure, yeah, I mean, what, there are some counties who won't give any zone benefits for solar, wind, et cetera. There are some who will give them only the, uh, the sales tax exemption, that way, once construction is over, they can, they can, they can use that as a, as a benefit if they want such development. But then they come out of the zone once the, the, the construction is complete. Now, there are also discussions that you can take people out of the zone before the end, but it's complicated, and it's nothing you wanna get involved with at this point. So that's everything that's happening on enterprise.
Okay, then back to the business district, building improvement reimbursement program that we're trying to work on, um, Tom's working closely with Tracy to, to work out the way to implement. Probably won't happen until spring, when we can get everything lined up, but this will help hopefully clean up some of our downtown buildings, make some improvements, save some roofs, that kind of thing. And finally, a land bank update on Mike Davis, on Casey's options, and be prepared at this meeting.
Yes, I'd like to introduce, I think you, you've all met Mike before, he has been here to present, so he is the executive director of the Central Illinois Land Bank Authority, to which we now own. And he and I have been working not only on Casey's work plan, we've also been working, uh, Martinsville just joined a couple of weeks ago.
They're, they're on next week's agenda.
All right, and, um, and then we're looking at some other communities around here as well, so, uh, the land bank is growing, and so Mike and I have been talking about the initial work plan, about what we can work on, you know, with them to help with our, our housing situation here. The ultimate goal is to not have situations like what we're having with the, the property we were just discussing. So I'll introduce Mike, he'll just give a brief overview about how we, how we're gonna proceed.
Sure, so thank you all for having me here, um, I guess the two main priorities that came out in working with Tom, and I'm a big believer, if a community's gonna join the land bank, let's figure out the priorities quickly, have a work plan, and start moving things along. Um, so the two main ones are the existing vacant abandoned buildings, and what to do about them, and then vacant lots. And I'll start with the vacant lots, 'cause I think it's a little easier. So Tom had said, uh, I asked him, hey, how many lots does the city have, are you guys seeing development? Said we are, but someone said it's slow, there could be more, and I said, well, one option could be, um, because I think this is a challenge with non-home role communities, and selling vacant lots, there are two options, it's sealed bid or eighty percent appraised value. The sealed bid process, sometimes you don't know what you're getting, right? And, um, you could, in my opinion, the highest price doesn't always mean the most competent developer either. And so my idea is take the price out of it, right? And so what I had proposed to Tom was Casey could convey the vacant lots to the land bank, I market them for a dollar. There isn't, the, the goal isn't to make money, it's about how do you get the hands, uh, how do you get the properties into the hands of developers that can actually build a house? So I've done this in past jobs where you issue a request for proposals, or a request for, uh, qualifications for contractors, you score the applications, there are four main components. How many houses have you built, right? Someone, if you've built a hundred houses and you've built one, that person gets higher points. Um, s- and then it's financing, show me the bank statement, do you have the money in a, in a bank account to build a house, or do you have a letter of credit from the bank? Um, and then it's, uh, details, what's the schedule, like, the more, the more detailed, the better, the higher points you get. Um, and it's really, the whole goal is to have a merit-based system, so that way, the best developer that's doing really high-quality houses, you're gonna get a hundred points, and the person that's built one home and maybe not done the best job is gonna get lower points. And so Tom wanted me to just present this, see if people had questions, but again, this is, the goal would be to recruit contract, the best contractors and developers that you would want to be building in the community, and slow roll this, maybe you do one, two or three, um, and see, see who bid at the apple. But the goal would be, see how many vacant lots you could get developed, and for whatever reason, if there wasn't interest in a lot, you could always just do a side lot sale to the, a butler that wanted to expand their, their garden or their yard. But the real goal is, if there is interest in building, how do we make it happen sooner than later, and make sure you all don't wind up in a position where you're offering someone the third or the fourth extension to be able to get a house built, and so, I mean, it's not.
We sort of did that.
Yeah.
We sort of did that, we took the price out, we did the request for proposal, but you have to have the people that want to construct here, and so, and you did offer the, there were several that were, they're joining a lot, and they did sell some of those, so, not anti it at all, but I think you still, the, the issue for Casey isn't the request for proposal. It's getting people interested in coming to Casey and actually doing the work, because you, we've, we have done sort of that, uh, proposal concept, and most of them, several of them haven't, um, followed through, uh, but not everyone.
Sure.
There's been a couple, but not anti that concept at all, that's how we typically do the bid, because you don't necessarily want it just the highest price, you want an actual development on it.
Mm-hmm, and I met, like, I was in town last week, I met with the developer that has a house on the market for two hundred and fifty, and I asked her, are you ready to build another house, and she said, no, not right now. So the key is, you need to expand the pool of people that wanna build houses and find the ones that build good ones, and so, I understand what you're saying, this is a recruiting game. And the goal is for Tom and I to find the best people, and this isn't coming out of, like, thin air, like, the reason this is being brought up is Matt Toon is also doing this with the land bank. Um, and it's not vacant lots at the moment, they have a package of about six homes, half a block is in very bad shape. So they're gonna demolish the six homes, and they're gonna have half a block, and they were approached by a modular developer, and he said, I'd like to build six homes there. And so, this is sort of, if there's momentum possibly to do this in Matt Toon, and Tom has heard from developers, there's interest, this is sort of, how do we do this in a professional way, move it along, and not allow the closed bid or the eighty percent of appraised value thing to trip you all up? And if you said, Mike, how does this work? Uh, people would submit, uh, proposals to me, I score them to try to take politics out of, for the council, and then I would say, person A scored ninety, B scored eighty, C scored seventy, whatever it is, and I, it's kind of giving you all veto authority, where if you said, Mike, person number one's horrible, we don't want him building houses in the community, I'd say, okay, let's move on to person number two.
And you're gonna give us referrals?
Hmm?
You'll give us referrals?
Uh, well, I give, I'm gonna give you a list of, here are the three people that applied with my scoring, and you have veto to say, no, we don't wanna go with the top person, but it's really, I'm gonna give you a ranking system with a yea or a nay.
How would they do that if they transferred the property to you?
Uh, because I'd show up, I'd send a, this is what I did in Matt Toon, when, uh, the land bank got a title, uh, title of the property through the abandonment process. Uh, so I owned a home, and it was formerly a meth and heroin squatting den, but the bones of the house were good, so the, the title of the house went to the land bank's name after an abandonment petition was filed. I got three applications, I scored them, I sent the scoring results to my board member Alex, and I said, Alex, do you have any objections to me proceeding with so-and-so? He said, no, this sounds great, we're really excited, and I got the building sold to the guy in less than two weeks. I mean, the goal is, if people are interested, how do you move it along quickly? So, yeah, I mean, I, technically, the land bank would own title of the land, but the property's in Casey, and I tell people all the time, I'm now not out to do anything that the local member government isn't really interested in doing as well, so I'd wanna make sure whatever decision I have made aligned with what you'd wanna see happen.
So we could just get that all parked out?
That's the goal, is sort of, how do we get some of these things off the plate, people like Tom, allow me to move it along quickly, with Tom's buying an input, and hopefully you all have more homes built next year.
Mr. Ho.
I think it's a good point.
Thank you.
I just don't understand, for me, we've done that, I think this is a recruiting issue. It's not like the city can't do that same thing, we have done that. We have bid it out and not accepted the lowest responsive bid, we have accepted the best proposal. My concern would be, and we, and we could do, because you've gotten, how many people, how many properties sold like that? Eight. Eight. It's actually getting those people here interested in bidding on it, that's where there's this lapse, not the procedure is where I'm like, that's where I'm like.
Well, a lot of the.
It's the procedure we have in place, it's getting people actually interested in submitting a proposal, and then fulfilling that proposal.
You hit it, and sometimes contractors see land owned by local government, and they say, yeah, I'm good, I don't wanna deal with it, I don't wanna deal with the headaches, the hassle, and all of it. And so, to your point, it's been done before, it might have been, but some of this is like, how do you take the complications out of this, and call up, this is what I'm doing in Westville, call developers and say, would you build a home here? If so, I'm gonna try to, try to make it as easy as possible for you to fill out a good application. Because if you're a strong developer, you build a hundred homes, you have money in the bank, that's who you want, right? You're gonna score a hundred points.
So you're saying you've got a better pot, a pot to pick from already?
No, I don't have a better pot to pick from, but it's, it's a capacity issue, right? And there's only, if your attorney and Tom only have so many hours in the day, so the question is, do you want Tom working on this stuff? And trying to get vacant lots redeveloped and homes getting built, or do you want him working on the hotel or something else? And this is the whole reason why you joined the land bank, is so you would have added capacity to try to get more things done.
And Mike, Mike will be the first one to tell you, he doesn't want to take on a huge number of properties that aren't, aren't developable.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want vacant lots that can't be developed, or one next to a junkyard that no one's ever gonna build a new house.
So how are you going to try to bring contractors in here, 'cause we have the process in place to do exactly what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
But the issue is recruitment of contractors.
And, and we're working on that together.
Well, I mean, i- if he's taking it off your plate and you don't have a, that's what I'm asking, like, 'cause I wanna make sure this is successful. If you already had those lots sold and it wasn't successful under their current list of developers, how are we going to bring more potential developers to the table?
But we don't have a way to advertise.
We need attractive ability to start with.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So how do we bring those, how does, how do, what's the difference? Because we have the process in place, so what's the difference of attracting developers?
The difference is that these empty lots, or at least some of them, are off the plate of the city, and now the land bank has them. So it's not, they're not lots that the city has to, to worry about, the upkeep of them and everything.
Well.
But then the land bank would have to worry about that.
So I, I think the key here is taking a big picture look and thinking about the markets generally down here, right? And you could say, well, we tried this before, Matt Toon's also interested in doing this, right? Matt Toon's not that far away, so the same guy that's interested in to build, developing six modular homes here, the question is, oh, well, are you also interested in coming over to Casey? In the same conversation I'm having with per, people in Westville about building a new house on a vacant lot there, are you interested in coming down to Casey? So the more places you start doing this, and the more builders and contractors you have engaged, the higher likelihood that you're gonna find better people. But the, you bring up a, an important, on maintenance, like, I'm, I'm an organization of one, so in terms of maintenance needs, I tell the communities, mowing the lawn and, uh, sealing up the buil, the buildings is up to the local member community. But the key, Tracy, is just being honest, it's having a focused approach, where you say, here are the five lots that we wanna see things get built, and then I play recruiter to try to get people to build on them, and issue RFPs, and market the RFPs, and get as much press as we can. And if we don't have people build, it is what it is, we try, but the key is to try and work with other member communities, and go to a toon and say, what contractors are applying here, and you go to someone else, say, what contractors are applying there, and you try to build buzz and momentum to get more done.
So we could try this with, say, half a dozen properties?
Yeah, I mean, I'd go to Tom and say, it, it's, if, I don't want just some prop, I want the, the best properties that people are actually gonna wanna develop, and I'd say that's where you start. But again, this isn't a money, like, I'm gonna sell the lots for a dollar. So this isn't a money-making thing for the land bank, it's about, how do you get things developed, and ideally, see some of these homes producing tax revenue.
Well, that's why the bids that we placed out were largely based on the proposal, the submittal and the decision-making was based on the proposal, like you're suggesting.
Sure.
So that's why I'm trying to figure out, like, how do we see success from a bid packet that we've already put together, comparable, I think, and marketing to those that are actually going to be responsive, and not just responsive, but fulfill. So that's where I was questioning, how are, what, how do we get to that, because we have the documentation in place to submit the proposals, it's not about money, it's about what you're going to develop.
Sure.
And that's all, the city's done several of those, so my question to you wasn't abrasive in fact of like questioning, like, the process. I thi, I've used that process on hundreds of properties for multiple municipal. I think, I use that process on hundreds of properties for multiple municipal studies. It's actually, how do we market, how do we get more people that are actually going to fulfill to respond? And that's where my question was coming from.
That's where the marketing comes in, I mean, but when we got to market?
We don't, we don't have anybody market, we, we don't have a paper to put in yet.
Well.
I mean, we don't, we don't go out there and market our properties that we have for sale.
Well, I'm saying, what can we turn somebody's head to look this way? You know, what do we got going on here in Casey, Illinois? To get somebody to wanna come here and do that? I mean, people like he's talking about.
Well, right now, one of the big factors is building costs. And that's where the one person that bid, and we have reverters on ours as well. So there might be some other properties that come up. Um, and I always recommend a reverter. And that might be the case if you transfer it to the land bank, because you're gonna be responding. If it's not marketed, then we do a reverter, so it comes back to the city, especially if they're responsible for maintaining it. And that, that's one of the things that you're mentioning. But I guess, you know, it's a great idea, I think it's a great idea. I, but what, how will it be successful when we did generally the same thing? That's my question on marketing.
It's calling up the phone and finding contractors and begging and pleading with them.
We didn't, yeah, yeah.
No, he's, he's talking about contractors, we talking about.
I'm just saying, we didn't, I mean, we didn't call up contractors.
No.
No, we didn't do that, that's why.
That's why I'm asking about the marketing, that's why I'm asking, what will the difference be? And he's saying marketing.
Yeah.
Right.
People don't see that vision.
We already have that process in place, and so how will it be different? How will we get, he's suggesting he's going to do the marketing for that concept to get the developer, maybe the people that he has in Mattoon. Maybe the people that he's communicating with Westville. That's where the lapse is, and not just the marketing, but ensuring that those people fulfill.
Well, that's, I'd have the same reverter that you put in, but you give people twelve months, and if they don't do it, this, you take it back.
Well, I think you need more than twelve months at this point.
If he's doing.
I'm just telling you, like.
Well, I don't know, and I'm just being open, like, if you say, are you gonna build something? And they say, yes, we are, and here's the date and the schedule. I mean, my opinion is you should hold them to the twelve months.
Sure.
And you should come up with something reasonable. Like, I had a contractor on the Westville one, and he said, well, Mike, I, there's no way I'd start till this in the spring. And I said, yeah, I understand that, like, I know you're not gonna start building foundation in January, you're one of zero degrees out. So I mean, you build things in with, with reason, but yeah. He won that property, you'd say, okay, Jason, go ahead and start in April or May, and that's when the twelve month clock starts.
So would it be crazy to say, yeah, let him have three or four lots?
Well, we have to bid out to him, and he's gonna bid.
No, you don't, you could just do a voluntary conveyance, cause the conveyance isn't a sales.
I have to look at the statute, again, you and I both like, I thought you were supposed to have your, the attorney tell, show me that we had the authority.
There's, I sent you a conveyance memo from Brent in September, probably around your month, be good the night of your month.
Okay, well.
So again, I'm just here to help. If you want me to try to sell lots for a dollar, recruit contractors, I will. If you guys say you wanna do your own thing, that's okay too.
I want you to sell building under contractors.
So a couple of comments real quick for me. Um, we do have a lot of interest in our lots. I've had a lot of people reaching out, hey, when you guys can bid these out? I've been pushing them off because we have two or three properties we're waiting to tear down. And been in the past, we've bid them out with structures on there, they don't, no one bids on them. So I was waiting on that for one thing. Um, two, I think this is a good thing, because it takes stuff off of our plates, give them to him. We, I, like, it's last time bidding, I didn't market them. Um, we don't have the time for that, Tom won't have the time for that, so I think that's gonna help us find more people.
I, I agree.
And then my third question was about the conveying them to you, so as long as Tracy gets, you know, looked at, wanna get time to make sure we can legally do that. And it's a great thing to do from my personal perspective.
That's, that's one of the.
But I'd see it as cooperation, right? Because like, I'm, I don't have a landscaping company, right? So like, you guys would still be responsible for mowing the lawn. Or someone dumped a couch, or someone dumped trash, like. So I'd look to you to deal with the day-to-day lot maintenance, and my goal is bringing people in to try to get something built.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
And I'll just be open, like, in Mattoon, I lean on my local board member, and I said, Alex, like, who do you wanna see redevelop this house? And Alex started calling around the rehab contractors in town. And he said, hey, this is coming up. And he did his own part to market it to the people that he thought did great work in Mattoon. And so some of this is, and when we had a walkthrough of the house, he made sure to get in touch with them and contact them, so. Some of this is, I won't pretend to have all the answers. If you say, Mike, here are the two builders, we'd love to see included, it sounds great. I'll take all the input. I mean, it's really, how can I set up a process to get homes built here that you're, you all are gonna be happy and proud of?
And that's the goal.
Well, if we're all legit, Tracy, if we figure that out, I'm confident in this.
What'd you say?
If, make sure if things are legit, we can do what we wanna do here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, you know, the whole question for me is like, we wanna make sure that this is successful and.
Even if we were doing it, we'd still make sure it's successful. This gives us another.
Marketing opportunity.
Yeah.
So.
So we have, how many residential lots, Tom, remember? That, that are close to being vacant or are vacant, I think there's fifteen, twelve, something like that?
Yeah.
So maybe we do pick half a dozen of those and some of the best-sell.
Well, yeah, it took me to Mike's point.
Pick the best six.
You can look at it, that way we hold your feet to the Father, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I've been down here plenty, you all know, it's like, you pick something next to a.
I found out where I live.
Yeah. But if you pick something next to a grain silo, that's harder than.
And the other ones that we don't convey to, if we can convey, convey into them. I still think we need to move forward with doing our process of bidding them out and trying to sell them that way too. So we can, he can hit some, and we can do our process as well, just to start kind of move some of these.
Any of those ones that we sold, has anybody done anything on it yet?
Yeah, there's the one.
The one, Kim, you know, she did, she built her house on.
But then Harvey Garrett as well.
Wait, did we sell any? Yeah, like, one or two he bought, he built a house on.
Yeah, but those are, those are the solid people we ask, the others are just, yeah, I'll get that lot.
And we do have, it's not here, but we do have one with a reverter clause coming up, we have to talk about soon, I'm waiting on something from the contractors. So maybe next week we can have an update on that. So, yeah, there's been a couple, so, but I'm zero, yeah, so.
And there's also the option, like has been mentioned, it could be a side lot for somebody not preferred. We could also do something like a little pocket park as well.
We have done probably about three to five of the side lots. Those have worked out well, because they weren't really great developed on their own. But it got them off of municipal ownership, back to private, you know, care and.
Someone else is mowing the lawn.
Exactly.
It's not, not ideal, because it's not the new structures, but.
But they were smaller lots that I don't think that you could redevelop on, with a marketable home. Most of them were smaller lots that I don't think you could redevelop that well, so it ended up being.
All those smaller modular homes might be the, might be the answer for some people.
When I say small, I meant like, small, small. Probably like narrow and long to where you couldn't. It, it just wouldn't make sense to make a driveway that long, the cost would be prohibitive. Well, it's concrete for driveways, you'd have to have a driveway moved off to that side and just, it's a, these were small.
So that's.
Well, those aren't the ones that we would convey.
And then, did you want me to talk about the clean and lean stuff?
Yes.
So the second issue that I wanted to just bring up is, there's different strategies for distressed and, distressed abandoned vacant properties for each community. Um, some communities have a lot of properties with back taxes. We've looked at Casey, the properties that are distressed and like, you could say, are they rehabable? Or are they heading towards demo pile? Interesting thing is, they all have the taxes paid. So I know you said before, well, this is a forty-five thousand dollar demo bill, why do we have to pay bill? Um, if, some of these houses, even though the taxes are being paid, but they're not in great shape, if they continue down that route with no investment, there'll become more demolitions, right? And so the real strategy, uh, and my lawyer has prevented, provided a memo to Tom on this to outline it all, it's called clean and lean. So let's pretend there's an owner that lives in California, he's paying his taxes, but he's allowing the property to deteriorate, and you're all looking at it. You can get an administrative warrant, you go to the judge and, and you say, look, the problems, this property's a problem. We'd like the owner to repair, let's, the roof, the broken windows, the doors that are open, whatever. The judge, uh, you give that person fifteen days to repair. If they decide they don't have the money or they're not interested, then you would get permission from the court to repair it yourselves. So you would put the new roof on the property, foreclose on the lean. And then just like I did in Mattoon, you, I'd do an RFP, and you'd find someone else to bring the rest of the property up to code. But this is sort of the question of, do you wanna spend fifteen thousand dollars now? And put a new roof on the property and make sure it's not a future demolition? Or do you wanna just do nothing, see how it goes? And then maybe five years later, you're spending fifteen thousand dollars on a demolition? So this is the proactive, if you don't wanna demolish buildings, you'd have to take proactive action and go to court to force the owner's hands.
Well, most of them that we have now are demolishes.
A lot of them are, a lot of them could be, some of them might not be. And so that's what we have to deal with.
I'm talking about, but I know past.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, we.
Well, we think through that main list.
Right.
Now you're on to the next level. Well, yeah, we've been through two of us. You're not to the next level, not all of them are to the point of demo, I agree.
That's the goal is save, the, the whole strategy is save what you can, because.
Yeah, every house we demo, as we've seen, is very difficult to get a new house built on. So what, what the goal is, is that next level, we don't want any houses that are salvageable sinking into that definite demo level. So would you take those kinds too?
Well, that's what I did in Mattoon. So Mattoon, the difference was, they did it, they got titled to the property through abandonment. So if there's two years back taxes and the owner doesn't object, you file a petition in court, takes six to nine months. So we got, the land bank was a proud owner of this property, but it was jammed with trash. So they spent another six thousand cleaning it out. Then I bid out the property through a competitive process, and I got three applicants. The winner is putting eighty thousand dollars into the property and he's gonna sell it for a hundred twenty-five.
So do you go to tax sales or buy property?
No.
It's not through tax sales.
No.
But most of them that are on your list have paid taxes. So what you're referring to is under subsection A of the statute, where you send them notice.
Fifteen days.
And if they don't remediate, then you file a court action. We did this now, the ones that we've done it are more extreme, but this is a good process. What he's suggesting, this process is used to force remediation while the house can still be remediated, before it's to the process where it has to be demolished, so, correct?
Correct. And if one, if you said, well, how do we know the house can be saved? We don't know what's on the inside. The answer is you get an administrative search warrant, you go into the house, you have a contractor go in, and he said, he'll say, well, there's twenty thousand of rehab work or two hundred thousand of rehab work. And if he says, in my opinion, there's black mold everywhere, because there's pigeons flying around, and rain's been coming through, and there's black mold throughout the whole house, I would put this in the demo. He might say, some of like, property A, he might say, you know what, sorry, this isn't the demo bucket, this property's too far gone. Whereas property B, he might say, well, with the new roof, this has good bones and it could be saved, let's go ahead and pursue this. But you have to put in the work either way to find out, does it belong in the demo pile or does it belong in the rehab bucket?
But all of your ones on the list have obvious exterior issues that qualify for the dangerous and unsafe. So I don't think you have to do the administrative warrant, only because courts are reluctant. Um, I think you could do the fifteen day notice that you're suggesting, bring the complaint and do a discovery request. And it's less like search warranty. Um, because what you need is your appraiser and your contractor to go in and say, this is what's necessary to be done inside as well as outside, because outside you can generally tell. But the ones that you've, you have sent pictures on, they have outside issues too, correct?
That's gen, I mean, we're trying to pick the candidates that are best here. So I've asked Tom, like, we don't wanna be picking obvious demolition candidates, it doesn't make any sense. So the goal is to find properties that there's a small, there's something wrong with the roof, the windows, the doors. There's something that triggers the dangerous and unsafe, right?
Well, you, what about those that are obvious demo, what's the plan for those?
I mean, I leave those to you, right? And you could do fast-track demolition and have them down in a hundred twenty days. But I, I guess, like, you all have kinda said, when I came here, that the demolitions were being taken care of, right? And I think the main goal, from seeing Tom's presentation of the population, was nineteen, was three thousand in nineteen eighty, now it's twenty-four hundred. If you keep losing homes, it's just gonna keep going down, and you have an eroding tax base. So I think the goal at the land bank was to either, A, let's try to save, save some of these homes and see what can be done via rehab. Or B, see what we can do to get new homes built.
So how many in-kind houses we see, what are we looking at directly?
On the third list? Well, it keeps, it's changed recently, but what would you say you've got your current sorting at?
I had ten that was possible, at least half of them I would say is salvageable, definitely salvageable. The other ones were hiffy.
Well, I don't give, in, in the salvageable, if they're in the right areas, right?
Well, so the key is, this is where, not my money, it's your money, so this.
This is, yeah.
We're talking different stuff, dude.
Yeah, this isn't a, we don't own it, we can't transfer it to them. This is still the process of dangerous and unsafe.
Well, I'm saying, okay, once we own it.
We're not going to own it.
Well, the goal would be, well, the goal would be, if there's a, let's pretend there's a hole in the roof, right? You guys fix the roof, fifteen thousand. Then you say to the owner, hey, give me fifteen thousand dollars that we paid to repair the roof. If he does, you walk away, and you say, great, now the roof's repaired, we have one less demolition. If he doesn't pay, then you foreclose upon lean, and you are owners, with the goal of, what I did in Mattoon, you put in, let's say fifteen, let's pretend there's another fifty or eighty that's needed to bring it up to code. That's when you bid it out and find a responsible contractor to come in, put in the other extra fifty to eighty grand and sell it for a hundred twenty-five. But I think this is the key thing, you can sell a house for a hundred twenty-five, a hundred fifty. Once you talk about new construction, there's a limit, right? Like, how many three hundred thousand dollar houses can be sold here? So like, I think the focus on rehabbing whatever you can makes sense, because you're keeping the price point within reason. New construction's harder. It's, it's not cheap to build new homes, and you're gonna, you're gonna be anywhere in the two hundred to three hundred price range. Whereas if you do take on owning one of these homes that had a problem and you fix the roof, once it is rehabbed, it should be in the one hundred, one hundred fifty range.
And we do have some homes on this list that are already abandoned. So those would be.
Not a.
Well, we know that no one is living there.
Okay, they're vacant, yeah, they're vacant, they're not abandoned because you have to have two years. Now, the one thing you're, on, let's, a couple things. Abandoned, you have to check your water bills too. Because it's not just two years past due taxes, it's two years past due water bill. So if there's a water bill on that house, you can qualify as abandoned. Now, the issue with doing that is that the property owner will come in and pay the water bill, and then there are no.
Yeah, we're not really trying to seek abandonment here on any of these, cause they don't have the two years back taxes. And if you're a competent owner and you own four hu- And if you're a competent owner and you owe 400 bucks in a water bill, who in their right mind is going to lose a building over a $400 water bill? So they come in and pay it. So I think the real goal is looking at the 10 properties that Tom has identified that have paid taxes, but good things aren't happening. And I'll be open with you. In the ideal world here is, these owners start to take notice, right? And let's say you own property number one. You get sent a 15 day notice and they say, please fix the roof or we're going to do it for you. You might know some of the owners in town. You're going to say, oh, hey Steve, look at the letter I just got. My lawyer has said the idea is to send the message and hopefully you guys don't have to go in and replace a whole bunch of roofs. The goal is to light a fire on their people's behinds and get them replacing the roofs with their own money.
That's what I've always said about nuisance enforcement, right? You know, I've always said that. And Steve, this is what Tom was sort of trying to communicate last time, like, keeping these homes from getting any worse to where then they become, where you have to demolish them. And then you lose the tax, taxes on it and you lose yet another housing mark. You know, your housing market becomes depleted. And you're right. What, when you could have a house for sale for 150, you can't build that $150,000 house for 150. That's going to be closer to 300 now to build the actual thing. So this is what Tom was trying to suggest at the last meeting, both Tom and I. We have to come up with a plan for those homes that are dangerous and unsafe, but still, what we believe without doing further inspection, salvageable. And so that's what you're suggesting is those dangerous and unsafe, but most likely still salvageable. Can we push either the property owner to do the work? Or if they don't do the work, the city put in the first part of it, lean it out and then foreclose on the lien. And our lien would be superior to all liens except for taxes. But they've already checked the taxes. Those taxes have been paid. None of these properties on the list, maybe one, have a past due tax.
No, there are three.
Well, just one, one year, right? On those three.
On one address, it's 2022 and 2023 and owed this year.
But do they live in them?
No.
That one, that's, that you can go for abandoned.
Yeah.
I meant on the ones that are lived in, still marketable.
Well, there's another one that it's multi-unit building with two years of back taxes and owed this year.
But that one, they lived in?
Partially lived in. Some units are somehow.
But still, that's not abandoned.
And some of this, it's just code, right? It's, it's like, there are carrots and sticks and you can offer people the carrots all day long. But if they're not biting at the carrot, at some point you have to get the stick out and start fining and penalizing people.
So do we want to give them a shot?
That's the question.
I think that's why we join the lane. Why we join the lane then?
Yeah.
Yeah. So yes.
So what it will take is, with some of these, you know, we pick out a couple of properties to start with and we develop the strategy, you know, each property, there's, there's no way. This is one of the reasons why I definitely wanted to have Mike here tonight is because he can't come and say, this is how it will always work. Because each property is going to have its own individual characteristics and history and players involved. We'll have to come up with a strategy for each property based on that. But I think it's time that we start is this, you know, I don't want to call it an experiment because it's a proven, there's a proven track record about how to use this process. But it's, it's a new strategy for us to try. And, but that will potentially require us to use some funds that we would have had set aside for demolitions. You know, we've got it in the statement, what's, what's it called? A statement of property.
But at least we have something going on.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And that's, I'm just trying to throw out ideas that haven't been done. And like, I'll give an example in Pontiac. So Pontiac's going to be the newest member of the land bank. Them, Martinsville and the Comas are joining next week if the board approves it all. Pontiac spends about 150 grand on demolitions every year. And I asked the mayor, do you want to reallocate some of that money and put it towards recabs? And I said, do a roof replacement program. And maybe if you do 10 roofs, then you're not going to be doing demolitions five years from now on those same properties. So her answer was, yeah, sounds good. How do we start the roof program? So some of this, it's your money. I'm not going to tell you how to use your own money, but it's up to you to decide, do you want to spend the 15 grand on a demolition? Or do you want to spend the 15 grand replacing a roof and trying to keep that on the tax rolls? And there are two ways. I mean, in the Pontiac context, I'm talking about, how do you spend 15 grands? Where there's a little old lady on social security, has a leaking roof, doesn't have money for it. It's a homeowner occupied property. In this case, there is no little old lady. It's just a vacant property sitting there. And if you, if guys don't act, it's going to become a demolition in the next five years. So it's your money. I'm not going to try to tell you how to use it. It's just, do you want to selectively, like Tom said, you probably have to pick out two projects. You got to start somewhere. So you pick out the two that maybe have the best promise. And I understand what Tracy said, you want to be very careful on administrative search warrants. You can go through a discovery process, but the key is getting someone inside to look at it. Because the worst thing you could do is say, okay, we got the order from the judge. Let's go ahead and replace the roof. And you find out the building's not salvageable.
I, I go, well, you, you can't even get to that order without having some form of inspection. I just think, I know the judges. And I just did an administrative search warrant and they had to have a judges meeting on the topic, not this county, for, with all the judges or several of the judges, because they were concerned that once we saw one administrative warrant, that they were going to flourish and just ask for warrants all the time. And I've only asked for one administrative warrant in 22 years. So there is a more palatable option is what I was suggesting. Administrative warrants are, yes, it's a definite option. I just think with Clark County judges, a more palatable option will be the inspection process through discovery that you can get because you're already filing that court action.
How do you, how does that get enforced? That discovery?
You request inspection through the court and the court authorizes it. It's through the civil code procedure. It's a, it's, it's just like authorizing your experts to go inspect and you can do that.
Just so you all know, this isn't some, like, this is going to be done in other communities as well. Like, the Comas is the same. The Comas has 50 properties that are kind of in this gray zone of, are they going to become demolitions if there is an action? All taxes are paid on all 50 properties and they're all owned by the same five or six people. And so this is, like my lawyer kind of said, the goal there is maybe you'll do one property per owner and then you start seeing a whole bunch of roofs get fixed, right? But some of this, you kind of need to apply pressure. And if you don't apply any pressure, you probably expect to see no action.
So you're the, you'd be the heavy?
Your higher code enforcement would be the heavy. I'm just a guy that's here to outline.
We're still doing the court appearances. That's the thing. We, we're. But going back to that, I think in selecting, I didn't want to finish this. In selecting them, I'd get the title search to see whether or not, like, there's several of them that are bogged down that are foreclosed or action right now. I don't know that you would want to select those. A real quick title certificate, a judgment and encumbrance lien will kind of help you make that determination.
Yeah, and we do title searches on any property that we're going to touch. I mean.
Right, but I'm saying like, when, I'd go ahead, you don't have tons of them. And Clark County can do real quick searches for you and help you make that determination of which ones might be easier. Like, for instance, a couple of them have decedents, right? What if you have, and I'm going to use up the count, and we ended up having 30 some heirs? That may not be a great test subject for you.
I understand.
So I think making, you know, how you're going to possibly look at what issues are there. But there's a, there's a good list of probably 10, 15 that you have to start with. Maybe make your final determination based on your search. And that might pick the easier ones to pick off first.
Oh, yeah. No, I get it. I, I think the key is just making sure, is the council on board with the approach? And if there are any money to be spent, are you on board spending the money to?
Tom, just take care of it, would you?
Well, so I do want to, I do want to mention the work that we've been working. So we can do with the land bank, not only on the residential side, but commercial as well. Do you want to talk, is there, what difference would there be on commercial properties, Mike?
I mean, it's, it's pretty similar. It's just the scale of it is different, right? Where residential, you're going to replace a $15,000 roof. And commercial, it's a different ball of wax in terms of dollar figures that are involved. But just like the homes, if Tom had said, well, we were 3,000 people, now we're 2,400. I've heard him say, well, it's great that we have the world's biggest thing here, but wouldn't it be nice if we still have that building? And I think the key is, if you want to see fewer commercial buildings go to the demolition pile, then the same logic applies, right? If you see there's a problem with the roof, the window, the door, any of those issues, yeah, you'd go after the commercial building owners and have the same strategy.
And I think this is where code enforcement actually comes into play.
And they need to, you need to act. Unfortunately, because there are so many years of not acting on some of them, like we got backlog and we're taking care of some of the backlog. But you need to act quicker before, like, a lot of the things that you've done for the last couple of years are like obvious demo. They, they've just gone too far, too long, right? And so what Tom and Land Bank is suggesting is acting quicker on code enforcement, not letting it hit to the point, like, once you start seeing a broken window, once you start seeing water damage, once you start seeing cracking on the brick.
Or the front door is wide open.
You know, yeah. You know, just the little things you need to pay attention to sooner because the, the more you ignore it, the more that you just can't salvage it anymore because of the cost, especially with commercial buildings. And that is especially true with the type of commercial buildings that you have downtown.
You buy your drone.
Well, I mean, some of them were, they were obvious, like.
So what, what kind of work do you need to do as far as building codes and product, I'm sorry, property maintenance codes? But what kind of work do we need to do around that?
I don't know that you need building codes. You just have to look at enforcement. I think you have that. It's just having the personnel necessary to keep track of it.
Well, I brought the personnel down last week to meet with Tom and I gave them a little tour. So the people exist to do the work. It's just a matter of, do you all want to hire them and start hitting people with the stick a little bit?
It's the personnel, it's a, it's having the manpower and following through.
So what do I, what do I tell these people, the building codes that we have now?
You, well, we don't have building.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
You have nuisance enforcement, which is the code. It's dangerous and unsafe. So it's a building code, not in the way that most people, you don't use the word building code because that's as far as like life safety code.
How, how is this developed from what Adam does?
This is, this is what Adam does.
So we wouldn't.
Code enforcement, but I wouldn't call it building code because what people think of with building code is like, whenever you're doing repairs or.
That is what I'm talking about.
Well.
We wouldn't take out of Adam's hands tall grass and things like that.
No, I'm not talking about that. But he's, he also does code enforcement whenever it comes to dangerous and unsafe. And dangerous and unsafe is even the minor issue. The way that your code is written, your dangerous and unsafe regulations, it has broken window. It doesn't have to be dangerous and unsafe the way that you're thinking like it's too far gone. Dangerous and unsafe means even the things that can lead to a bigger issue. So it's a nuisance code enforcement issue, not building code. Building code is whenever you're doing repairs of your actual structural or mechanical or electrical issue.
But aren't those the types of issues we want to deal with, with our downtown buildings? To make sure that if people are renovating these buildings, they're doing them correctly?
They're required when the building, when the state building code comes into play. So we're talking two different things. You're talking building code and nuisance enforcement, code enforcement. Building code is if somebody is actually doing work on the property or building a new building. That's, that's a different code enforcement that is separate from the kind of nuisance property issues. Separate but still important.
You gotta see some of the wiring and some of these big buildings.
Well, the code enforcement now, all municipalities are, are, a couple of years ago, you did not have a building code. Now, all municipalities are assumed to have the state building code.
But who's checking that to make sure?
They are supposed to certify it to you. A lot of municipalities, that's the one thing that we talked, we all talked about that, about what this small municipality do when they don't have a building code enforcer. That's separate than nuisance enforcement.
And this, this is what I've been dealing with, with the other communities, where I started this with Ridge Farm. And I said, can we have this owner donate the building to us? And the response was, well, Mike, why would, why would they do that if we're not enforcing code? And the response was, like, our fines are, codes are outdated, they have no teeth. It's usually the police that are issuing tall weeds, grass citations or unmarked cars. But it wasn't if, is there a hole or some significant problem at a commercial building? Is that person getting written up? And most of the time, the answer is no, because there is no, no one to write that person up.
Let's go back to empty lots.
Building code enforcement is different than nuisance enforcement. And building code is a larger topic that you need to address. What building code do you want? We're now getting really deep.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I was asking you about.
So what building code do you want? Because right now, you're assumed to have the state building code, which is the strictest version of it. We, that's a separate topic for.
Exactly, I don't want that.
So many different hours of discussion that we're going to have to do. I think today, for today's purpose, you're just opened up a big thing that we do need to address. The city does need to address, all municipalities need to address it because you don't want the strictest version. Any new development or any development of a building or repairs of a building over a certain percentage, they have to comply with the state building code. That can be very damning to your local people that want to do repairs to their building or do significant improvements to their buildings. We're talking commercial. There is residential as well, but we're, we're not going to address that because the commercial's the biggest issue. At some point, the city of Casey may want to adopt a building code that's not the state's so that you can put less strict provisions. The issue will then be who is responsible for ensuring that the work is done. Right now, all of those property owners, when they do work that falls under the state building code, are supposed to certify to the city and put that certification to the city. How does the city enforce it? I don't know. I don't know if anyone's done work.
Mike, what, what codes were adopted in some other communities that did shared code enforcement?
They started out from the same point of not having much on the books. They adopted International Property Maintenance Code. And then hired a shared code enforcement officer and started issuing fines on properties. And no one ever held the owner's feet to the fire. So once it started happening, then.
We never had a mechanism here to hold anybody's feet to the fire. So we weren't enforcing, but we didn't have anything until a couple of years ago, I guess.
No, you do, you did. It just hasn't been an enforcement thing and we do enforce for maintenance. We do enforce for dangerous and unsafe. We do enforce for needs grass. We do enforce. We do enforce for, I mean, name all the ones we enforce. Trash, garbage debris. There is, there is property maintenance concepts in your nuisance codes. But have they adopted a property maintenance code? No, they have not. They've adopted a nuisance code, which is.
I guess the question is, if someone had a hole in their roof, would they get written up and taken to court now?
Yes, we do it through the nuisance, we do it through ordinance violation of our nuisance as a dangerous and unsafe. There's probably been about fifty that we've done. So yes, but what you're talking about is a property maintenance code, which is like a building code. We sort of do the same thing through nuisance code.
Sure.
But you can do the same thing if you wanna do shared code enforcement because what you're also referring to is building code for actual work being done in the property.
As you said, we need to get that.
Well, you have it.
Well, we need the non-strict Illinois version.
You need the less stringent version.
Correct.
Because, like, for instance.
And then we need someone to enforce it as well, though.
But that's what we're talking about, right?
To a degree, you need somebody to enforce it. You can, anyone that gets a building permit, you can provide a provision. I do think you still need a shared enforcer of building inspections. But what you can do is make them certify. You just have to write, the people that you work have to certify that to the municipality. But I think that's getting too deep into like actual building code adoption is too deep for tonight's purposes.
I'm not saying we resolve it, but it's a direction we need to move.
Definitely. You definitely need to, if you are going to have new development or even repairs of buildings, you need, I recommend that you have a less stringent building code.
That's what we're talking about. We're talking about taking the business district funds for reimbursement on building repairs. And I'd like to know, I think everyone would like to know, that any money that the city is using to fix these commercial buildings, it's being done correctly? And so why wouldn't we, we should move forward with that, I, I would. Yeah, we won't solve it tonight, but.
I know that, we did talk about this a lot like a few weeks ago and I think you said, we just need to get a modified code that makes sense for Casey. So the question is, what does the modified code like, look like works for Casey?
And it's not any of us putting that together because I can confirm that none of us have the capability of understanding firewalls and. When I say us, I mean you, I don't know your.
I'm not an engineer either, so.
Who do we talk to about that?
I, let me, again, that is something that I've been work, trying to figure out for a lot of my communities, there are small communities that still want development but don't want to make the state building code have such a negative impact. If they have to comply with the state standards, it has such a negative financial impact on proceeding with development. So.
And all the other communities that we're talking to, yeah, they're like, like Mike said, they're facing the same issues.
You, you got two things going on. If you're gonna redo a building, if the owner wants to do it, he's gonna do it the way he wants to do it. Or if he hires somebody to, they're gonna do it right. Not saying that this guy won't do it right, but, I mean, I wired my house in this right.
You're exempt.
You know?
You're the problem. Now, you can't hire your buddy to do it that doesn't have, that's illegal, that doesn't have.
You're saying, so on a building, you have to have a licensed electrician to wire and, and all that?
Yes.
So what's the problem here? I mean, you know, if that's fact, that's fact.
On commercial buildings, we don't have an enforcement right now. That's what tonight Tom has been trying to reference a certain time.
Well, then we need enforcement.
But we don't. So that's what we need to figure out, how do we do that?
Not just enforcement, we wanna make it less stringent to where you can still proceed financially. For instance, one of the things is sprinkling, I'll give you an example. So residential code, technically, new homes are supposed to be sprinkled. That's such an increased cost to it, it may prevent any future development. So you want to exempt out some things, make it not as strict. And I'm just giving a slight example because all of the things are so technical that none of us can do that. I don't pretend to understand the building code. And it took me with the city of Eppingham, it's a forty-five page document adopting the state codes and then all the exceptions and deletions and amendments because they're trying to make, they have to have a code. You're required to have a building code and a fire code and a life safety code. But you can make revisions to it to make it more financially feasible to actually have development in our areas. And so that's what you're suggesting we need to do. That's sort of separate from the nuisance enforcement, but intricately tied together, I just think it's a, such a large topic. I don't want to confuse anyone on that topic tonight.
Well, we've come a long way from empty lots. Well, the, the problem is multifaceted, they all, all work together.
Well, let's work on that a different day.
Well, it eventually needs to because you, if you are gonna have, especially new commercial, you're gonna have some significant issues with new, any new commercial development initiative Casey if you don't address the building code concept.
Well, so in your position, we would wanna do this stuff, wouldn't we? See, oh, there you go. You do. Figure it out.
You probably don't wanna be the code enforcer.
Me?
No.
No.
I'm gonna be retired.
Yeah.
There you go.
I do not wanna be the code enforcer. Mike, anything else we haven't covered?
No, I, I just say that the communities, what you're dealing with is not different than what, all the other communities that I talked to, they're dealing with the same set of issues and the things. And the real question is, if you don't have good building code that works for commercial, how do you get a good one adopted and have someone start enforcing it sooner than later? So you keep the buildings that you have. And that's.
Yeah, we do wanna make it, anybody who's owning, especially a commercial structure downtown, it needs to be very painful to let the buildings continue to deteriorate. It shouldn't just, you shouldn't just sit by and let them get to the point where they have to be demoed like the one we talked about tonight. It needs, you know, it needs to be painful to do that.
I hope I got you every down here.
It hasn't. That's why we're in the situation we are.
But they, they, you've made steps towards fixing several of them. There's, there's been steps. There has been.
Loons.
But they had such a large problem of wait, from waiting, so that's where it just looked like it.
They should never have been allowed to get to the point where.
We keep knocking buildings down, we ain't gonna have to worry about it, they'll build new.
They should have never, I, you know, but that's a policy decision that we, you guys get to make.
We got buildings right now in town that's got wa, two wires. And, and, and every so often, there's a insulator, insulator, insulator. Then the other wire, insulator, insulator, insulator. There's two wires. That's old.
So where do we need to be tonight now to get going?
I think we need to do title searches. They need to choose which ones are for rehab program and present those. I mean, everyone seems pretty agreeable. So choose which three, four that you'd like to start with and let's move forward on those. But the ones that need demoed, we still need to act on those.
Absolutely.
You know, there are still a couple that are on the, that need to start on the dirt list for demo. Cause we're through the major ones that were so obvious.
So when it comes time to tell somebody they need a new roof, who's gonna go tell them that?
The notice of dangerous and unsafe will tell them that. Thank you.
You need anything else from me?
Yeah, my horse is tired, why don't you roll my bike? Thanks, buddy.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have a three-year-old and I told my wife I'd be home for bedtime, so. You all have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. The superintendent does not need to be a building inspector also. They inspect utility, gas, water, electric.
Well, and it's also to the benefit to have somebody from out of town.
Yes.
Definitely.
If you had a small, a larger community where you had code, a lot more code enforcement, it's totally fine. The city of Eppingham has a plumbing and electrical and they have a building code and they have a fire code, but they have the ca, they have the manpower and the capability. But when I, when this was discussed when we met at Richard's Farm, I'm the one that brought up, hey, I have all these communities, one of the things that we're looking at is shared code enforcement. Independent contractor or doing an intergovernmental agreement with a community that may have the manpower and might be willing to contract out, there's two different options that we can look at. Um, for Casey, either finding a community that has one, that has the capability to do the few that you have or enter into an agreement with some independent contractor or contractors because electrical and plumbing and fire and life safety code are quite varied on requirements. That's different than nuisance. Enough?
Okay.
That's it?
All right. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on into unfinished business, uh, so we'll look at the report for the park committee that was held on nine fifteen twenty-five. Uh, let's give a brief summary of my committee meeting. Uh, I was approached by an individual here in town who was interested in running a flea market slash, just a, one of the farmer's market in the park. Uh, so she gave us, uh, the town of Litchfield where they have one that has been very successful with bringing more people to town and something to do in the park. Um, so with that, um, the request and what we talked about in the group was looking at what insurance necessities would be needed uh, to be able to host something like that within the park. So, uh, my goal is to check with Litchfield to see what they, what their requirements are. Uh, secondly, we talked about the campground.
Really quickly, I recommend that you do at least a license where they would be required to identify you and carry insurance. And you could do a license, uh, which is not as permanent as a lease and allow them certain timeframes to utilize the park rather than an ongoing lease of that park area.
Okay.
Yeah, I just notify that person to that right there before you waste a lot of time on it, see if they're agreeing to that.
Okay.
A license with insurance requirements and indemnification.
So would that have to come from the entire market? I mean, I just.
So it'd be one person running that, but you have different vendors there, correct?
Yeah, cause they're getting paid, they're getting paid, that one person is getting paid all that vendor fee, there's vendor fees.
No, it would be.
It wouldn't be vendor fee?
No, it would go to the, it would be a vendor fee, but it'd be for the, the city. They're wanting to utilize the space and then pay the city to have it. She's just wanting to organize it.
So the vendors would all pay the city?
Yes.
Really?
Not for her.
Nothing. She wanted her booth paid for, so she wanted to set her booth up for free. We charge a vendor fee and then that money would go to the park.
I did look into the Litchfield program and it does appear to be a city-run program. Um, it's very specialized in who they allow in. It's a juried, um, selection of vendors. Everything has to be older than, I think, from nineteen eighty-five, et cetera. There are all sorts of restrictions on that, um, which would be run very differently than what she's proposing. And that's not city-run.
And I am concerned, then you bring in, if you're making the determination who gets to bring in or not bring in, that's a constitutional issue because then you have, I mean, if there's speech involved with it, like signs or even like, you know, for like the city of Eppingham over on this side is they do free, free Bible lessons or something, and then if you say no to somebody, not anti it, but that seems a lot of work for the community if it's city-run versus the one person.
Okay.
If she were to do the, all the work, right, who's gonna, if it's city-run, who's gonna do that? We're back to the manpower.
More than a single person.
Although I love a farmer's market, don't get me wrong.
Well, she'll probably organize it all for you if you wanted to.
But it's. She just needs to get the insurance and whatever, she needs to.
What I worry about is when somebody says, I wanna do it competing with. What do we say then? Well, yeah, you can do it the third Saturday, they're doing it the first Saturday.
Not, if she has a group that does it and carries the insurance, I mean, first come, first served on that topic.
So we did the Market Time uptown, who sponsored that event?
Market Time uptown.
Yeah, we did it on the corner.
Casey and Action.
Casey and Action sponsored that.
I was there, they, they ran it, did it.
Yeah. So Casey and Action carried the insurance for that event? Okay.
So, so you'd have to tell her, she has to carry the insurance. Wouldn't she need to be like a, have an LLC or something? You wouldn't want her as an individual?
You could do it as an individual, but I don't know that she would want that.
I wouldn't think so.
We wouldn't care, it's, would she care? I wouldn't wanna do it individually because that's a liability on me individually. I mean, that's a topic that she may wanna address.
Okay, she's probably not thought that far.
I actually, I mean, farmer's markets and stuff like that bring a lot of people.
But they're generally city-run.
I'll shut it up.
Uh.
Either city-run or there's an outside organization that does the law.
City of Eppingham is an outside organization.
Marshall is.
City slash chamber.
Like the public festival has a market, you know, that's, it's a different entity that runs it, puts it on. Still requires insurance and everything, still have all those requirements. We provide to the city, so.
Maybe have further discussions with them.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Okay.
It's not a bad, I, I mean.
Okay. So I'll continue on with, uh, that discussion.
I'll get on track with yours, buddy.
Okay.
So you're on track.
All right. So, and then so that moved on into, um, looking at doing some more campground signage. Um, so I'm working, waiting on a call back from the IDNR for listing the, um, park campground on their website to be able to be listed on their list of like approved, um, campsites. And that will allow for the IDNR mobile pay, um, which leads into a, uh, more signage and, and stuff listed within the campground and rules and regulations posted. So that way we could still, you know, in the event that someone is not available to go over and collect money, um, from people there, which would also give us good data to, uh, look at who's staying there, um, how many nights and so on and so forth, that we can all collect that electronically. Um, and then also look at doing bathroom remodels. Um, and we talked about there were some proposed layouts and, uh, we need funds available. So it'll be a, a meeting to further go in discussion on this, um, but that was just the, the highlights of the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Speaking of park real quick, the pick wall courts are playable now. I don't know if you might have been aware of that yet. I'm not everything's done down there yet, so we got some lights and some basketball holes and some signage put out, but they are playable and can be used.
That takes too much energy.
All right. Uh, second thing is a report on the Public Utility Committee meeting held on nine fifteen twenty twenty-five.
Um, that's me. So the Public Utility Meeting was held and, um, at this point in time, we are, do I have to vote on this?
There's an ordinance for a rate increase, yes.
Okay. So at this time, um, we are proposing a three cent increase in utility kilowatt hour, which will bring it to fourteen cents per kilowatt hour at this time.
For residential and.
For residential and, um, commercial.
You're proposing the three cents all across the board for all the rates?
Yes.
But that fourteen cent for just the residential inside sale and trade?
Yes. So, I don't know. We will take a look at this periodically and see if we need to do further more. I hate it, but stuff's going up and we're falling behind and.
We're still behind.
This is probably not gonna give us where we need to be to begin with, I'll be honest, but, um, instead of raising it tremendously, this is where we're gonna start, so. My proposal for the Public Utility Meeting proposal is to raise it three cents across the board.
That is, we'll have ordinance five eighty-nine best.
Okay, I will, uh, you have anything else to add, Lori? Okay, uh, if there's no comments or concerns with that, I will take counsel, counsel action of approval of ordinance number five eighty-nine, electric rate update, uh, three, additional three cents, fourteen cents for residential and commercial, or residential, inside city limits.
It does, and the ordinance explains what each different rate is for outside city limits and also...
It's a three cent increase across the...
Yes, okay. And I'll take a motion.
A motion.
See the first?
We gotta do it.
Why are we looking at me?
I'm just saying, I'm gonna, I can look at all three people and say, God, I'm out of way.
I'm in motion.
Steven the first. And a second, still.
Oh, can I do that?
Yeah.
I'll then, yes.
And Lori the second, and you may roll your votes.
Uh, Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Alright, uh, moving in on to order reports. Uh, I do not have anything for mine, other than I wanted to thank the utility department for all their hard work that they did this past week in getting everybody's water turned back on. It was, uh, a lot of work, a lot of hassle, and there were obviously a lot of complaints, but what are you gonna do?
We need complaints.
Uh, okay, Steve?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I just say what he said about city guys, you know, I appreciate them a lot, you know, so... I appreciate them so much, and they got worried about people complaining, in that way. That's all we got.
Okay, uh, Lori?
I love all of our city guys and all of the, the people around here. And we take a lot of venomous from a lot of people. But in the end, we're here to do what the citizens of Kansy want. And, um, sometimes I think that gets overlooked and, um, anyway, that's all I'll say about that, but you have to agree with me, so...
You're almost done.
Yeah. Um, the only other thing I have that, um, I would like to ask is, I know at the last meeting, we talked about the park lease, and where do we have to go?
Let me get a consensus. They requested to reduce the lease, uh, insurance from five thou- five million to three million because of the amount of, uh...
Their rate.
Costs.
It doubled their rate.
So they were asking if we would reduce their required insurance from five million to three million. And that will...
It's two million per limit, additional is just the overall umbrella, what's that called?
Umbrella.
Umbrella policy was exactly five million, just a three million dollar extension. Mayor Mike said he was okay with it, let me know what character sounds for it.
And I'll, I'll do an ordinance ratifying that change, but in the interim so that we can get it back to them to sign. Are you okay with that?
Fine, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Not right now. Not right now, but I do want a good consensus so that I know if we can get them to sign it, that we then submit it for ratification at the next city council.
That sounds good.
What's the length of the lease?
A long time.
Forty-five year, forty-seven years.
I gotta worry about it.
Alright, Lori, anything else?
Um, no.
Alright, Jeremiah's not here. Uh, Marcy?
Um, I'm, go ahead and agree with everyone about the city's response to emergencies. We've seen it several times, and that group just works as a team. Doesn't matter what department they work for, they get together and they make it happen. Can't say enough about that.
Alright, Danny, you, uh, Carley?
Awesome. You sure?
Oh, you don't like our utility?
I can.
Alright, did, uh, the mayor leave any notes?
No, he did not.
Okay, uh, so if there's no comments or concern, I will look for adjournment at seven fifty-six P M.
Sunday.
Marcy first?
I'll second.
Carley the second, you roll your votes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?